Next up is our school board candidates. And I appreciate you all being here. And I was just gonna give a brief, I hope it's brief, about the actual role of the school board and what they do as opposed to the role of the superintendent. Because sometimes there's confusion about, people are unaware of the role of the school board, the specific duties. Basically, the school board sets policies and the budget while the superintendent is in charge of day-to-day operations of the schools. The superintendent, for an example, the superintendent and the staff prepare a budget. The superintendent presents it to the school board. The school board reviews the budget, can make changes, advertises and conducts public hearings. And they adopt the budget and then they transmit it to the commissioner of education for approval. Some policy areas that the school board members oversee, I mean, it's curriculum, enrollment facilities, school calendar. Other areas are student safety and student discipline and matters like expulsions. They're over transportation. One thing is for personnel, the school board is responsible for creating the positions, basically establishing and designating the positions to be filled, the qualifications and setting the salary schedule. The superintendent selects and nominates people to fill the position and directs those personnel. The school board can either accept the nomination of someone for a position or they can reject it for cause, though what good cause is, it's subject to some. But anyway, just on the role of the school board. So anyway, to start, we'll just go down the line and we'll alternate again. Hopefully, this won't be confusing, because this is five. But to begin with, Mr. Hand, if you would introduce yourself.
I'm Eddie Hand. I've been in Crawfordsville for about 10 years now. Originally from Jackson County, small county, just like Waukulla. My wife and I moved here 10 years ago when we got married. We actually hit 10 years in November. And we have three kids currently in the school system. We'll be whether 10, we'll be whether nine, seven and six right now. And we have a two-year-old little girl. So we love Waukulla County. We plan to be here for a long time. My wife has a lot of ties to Waukulla County. She grew up in Leon County, Spring Hill Road. We love where we're at. I work at the prison. I run the health services department for the Waukulla CIAD up there near Woodville. And manage about 160 employees. So I enjoy my job and I enjoy being in this community.
Okay, I think this is the hardest part, talking about yourself. Okay, my name is Gwendolyn State, Gwendolyn Manning State, and I should say, I am a lifelong resident of Waukulla County. I was born and raised here, over in Waukulla Station, what is now called Benny Rogers Road. So I was born there, went to Waukulla High, graduated in 1975. I attended Florida State University. Eventually transferred to Florida A&amp;M University, where I'm a proud Rattler, two times. Proud Rattler, two times. But I love education. I think it is vital. And I have my family here. Thank you all for coming. I have two daughters here tonight. I have a daughter and a son that lives down in Southwater. And that's basically who I am right now.
Mr. Walker?
My name is Dodd Walker. I grew up in Waukulla County also. Graduated in 1980 from Waukulla High School. Grew up at Waukulla Station as well. My mother was the school board member from District 1 for 16 years back after I graduated high school. So I've heard a lot about being, you know, how school board members get phone calls at night. I understand that going into the job. My career as an educator has been primarily in Waukulla County, 30 years. And I was school principal, school assistant principal. I was a guidance counselor before becoming assistant principal. So I've also been the head of adult education in Waukulla County. Grew, like I say, been around Waukulla County my entire life and I'm a realtor in Waukulla County now. So I know how we're growing, I understand that. And that's one reason why I really want to be on the school board, because I know what's about to hit us. And I want to be part of making things happen in a good way.
Hi, I'm Joanne Daniels. I have spent my entire educational career here in Waukulla County. I did go to FSU, Go Mels, a couple of times. And so that's where I met my husband Lloyd. He was a teacher here for 35 years. My kids went to school here and have two grandsons in school here now. My daughter Karen is a CPA here in Waukulla. My son James teaches at River Springs Middle, as does my son-in-law, Bill Taylor, Karen's husband. I have one grandson at River Springs still. And I have a son at the high school, grandson at the high school. They both are doing very well and they have loved every minute of being in Waukulla Schools. And I'm really happy that they did that. My kids had all kinds of advantages here that they wouldn't have had elsewhere. Plus, they had the warm home environment, which we really like about Waukulla. I have been a classroom teacher. In fact, I was teaching at Waukulla High when Dodd graduated. Anyway, I did then go to Waukulla Middle School. I taught there for years and became assistant principal and then principal for my last 12 years at Waukulla Middle School. And this is the end of my second term. I'm hoping for one more. And I really love working with our kids. We have the best kids in Waukulla. And I can tell you, I worked with a lot of kids in Leon before I got a full-time job here. And there was no comparison. The kids down here are just so much sweeter and nicer and yes ma'am, and got hugs from them. And I really like our kids. We're lucky, we have a great community and I'm real happy to be a part of it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Lahon. I live in Sopchopy. And I'm entering my 17th year in education. I started out teaching at Crawfordsville Elementary and moved back to my home school, of Metar Elementary, because I do live in Sopchopy. That's what I consider home. That's where my girls went through elementary. I have one daughter who's going into third grade next year. And my oldest daughter is going into Waukulla High School. I have taught at Waukulla Middle School. I was a librarian at Waukulla Middle School for two years. And I miss the classroom, I miss the interaction with students. So I left Waukulla Middle in the librarian position to go to River Springs Middle School to teach our students who struggle with reading. Because the librarian ladies next door will tell you I'm here at least twice a week with my kids picking up books because I do love everything about that. So I moved to River Springs Middle School and I just moved back last year to Metar Elementary to be with my youngest daughter because my oldest daughter is going into the high school. So I'm gonna let her venture out on her own at the high school. She did not want me to follow her to the high school. She said, absolutely not, Mom, you stay with Reagan at elementary, do not go with me. So my kids have had the privilege of going through Waukulla Schools, as did I. I graduated from Waukulla High School in 2001 and went on and received my masters. Two years ago, I thought I was going to go into administration, but after a lot of prayer and talk with my family, I feel led to take on this role. Teaching in the classroom shows me firsthand, because I do teach currently, what our needs are. And talking with parents, seeing how education has changed over the last 16 years, it's changed a lot. We have a lot more changes coming. Jobs are coming out now that haven't even been thought of, you know, that our kids are not prepared for and we need to kind of move in that direction. Married my husband, Sean Lahon, in 2005. So I'm not sure how many years that is, but that's who I am.
Next question, and we'll start with Ms. App. This is submitted. Are there specific goals you're looking to put in place, if elected?
The immediate goal that I would like to implement is a better communication system from the school board and the schools with the parents of Waukulla County. Based on conversations that I've had and my research of the county system, our system had, our schools has the systems in place, but there is a lack of communication, effective communication, I should say, with different pockets of the community that is not being shared.
Well, my primary goal is to see vocational education really get a push in Waukulla County. And we're at the right time for it with this grant that we just recently received, $20 million, which will go in to help build a vocational center in Waukulla County. Vocational education really, it went away for a while. Everybody started playing on the computer. And then all of a sudden, everybody realized, well, we don't have any plumbers or anybody to put an air conditioning system in a house. So it's made a big comeback. And there's a lot of money and emphasis been put on it in the last few years. I started a welding, adult welding program in Waukulla County, which was kind of a beginning, getting to know welding for adults. And our relationship with Lively Technical College has really blossomed in the last few years. So, okay. So that's, I have, you know, there are other things that I would certainly work on, but vocational education is the primary place I'd like to be part of.
I have to agree with Mr. Walker. I think that continuing to offer some of the unique programs that we are now experiencing at the high school level with our new War Eagle Career and Technical Academy, it's gonna make a tremendous difference for our kids because we need to make sure that we are teaching what they need in order to be successful in their future. So that they can come out of high school getting good jobs with good pay and not have to worry about spending a lot of money on it. A lot of the things we're doing now is allowing the kids to get college classes, vocational training and certifications without having to pay for it or out of their pocket or their parents. And I'd like to see us, I'm really happy about the opportunity to work on the new programs for that program. The other thing I'd really like to work on more is I'm really focused on improving teacher salaries. And some of you may know that we've had monies, more monies given, and the governor wants it set up for beginning teachers, and that's great. But we can't afford to forget about the teachers that have been working there for us for a while. We've got to make sure that we come up with ways to improve teachers at every level, but especially the ones that have been there for their career. The other thing, I think we need more social programs back in the schools. We used to have a lot of small group guidance and things like that. And we kind of got away from it in order to teach other classes. But our kids need that kind of help. They need more. So that if a parent has a problem with a child at school, we should know about it and be able to work on that with our students. I would like to see more of that. And school safety is another thing. There's so much of that going on and I don't think we can afford to put it aside. We've got to work on it now, just like every other school. We never know what's gonna happen and we want our kids to be safe.
So as an educator, one of the educators that she just talked about, I am a veteran teacher, one of the few that still have a professional contract. So most teachers now, all teachers now actually are on annual contract. So my biggest push will be teacher retention. And the only way that we're going to retain our teachers in Waukulla County, the only way they're not going to leave Waukulla County, because they're not leaving teaching. Our teachers are still teaching, but they're teaching in Franklin County and they're teaching in Waukulla County. Because those two counties pay more and they have better benefits than we're offering our teachers. Another frustrating thing for teachers whenever they're looking at to be hired in Waukulla County is your veteran teachers are making the same, if not less, than some brand-new teachers, first-year teachers. And it's really hard to keep a teacher who has 15 or 20 years' experience that's making the same pay as someone who's coming in, especially if they're able at the secondary level to pick up a coaching position or a supplemental position and your elementary school teachers are not afforded those same options. The other thing for me is closing achievement gaps. Due to COVID and a lot of online learning, students are way farther behind. I'm a teacher and I can tell you, most students are one to a year and a half behind where they need to be. And we need more people working in the classrooms. We need more parapros working with our students in the classroom with the teacher. Almost a two-to-one ratio if we're hoping to close some of these student gaps because they're so far behind due to that. Also, student safety is another concern for me. Making sure that we have our guardians. We're doing a great job right now in Waukulla. Metar is a fortress. If you're coming in, you're having a bad year or getting buzzed in. Middle school, there are still some things that I would like to see done at the middle school level to ensure student safety. But I think that we have a good thing going with our guardian and our resource officers. But those are my top concerns.
One of the goals, one of the goals is school safety, number one. And we have a great sheriff, Jared Miller. And I think that, you know, his staff does a great job with guardians and everything else. You know, that's number one. Number two, number two, I'll agree with Laura on is school, is teacher retention. We have, we've got to do a better job retaining teachers. We've got to get the pay up. And teachers, you know, talking to the teachers, some of the biggest concerns they have is that they don't feel like their voice is heard. And I want to make sure their voice is heard. I want to be there for the teachers. I want to show them. I don't have an education background, but that's not a bad thing. Because I believe that not having an education background can give me the tools I need to have the teacher's voice heard because they're gonna educate me. So I feel like the, my main goal would be to be the support for the teachers that they don't feel they have.
And this question will start with Mr. Walker. Half-cent sales tax is set on the November ballot. Money is to go towards capital outlay, replace some aging HVAC systems in older schools, enhancing the hardening of schools for active shooters, adding more school guardians and surveillance, and replacing all the laptops for students. Do you support the half-cent sales tax?
I absolutely support the half-cent sales tax. That money needs to be coming to Waukulla County rather than going to Leon County schools. And we should be, we've always been very willing in Waukulla County to support our education system financially. Anytime that the voters have been asked to pass a bond referendum to build a school, they've come forward and done that willingly. I think that the school boards also, the schools have also done a wonderful job of repaying the voters with the product that's been put out there. So yes, absolutely support a half-cent sales tax. All those things you read off are things that I know just from my career are things that we definitely need. And the guardians and the school resource officers and the hardening of our schools, that's gonna take some money because our schools were not designed to be one-door in, one-door out. They just weren't designed that way back in 1960s whenever high school was being built and even the 80s when Waukulla Middle was being built. Or even in 2000 when River Springs, when that opened, was built. So it wasn't designed that way. It was more, very much more open. So, yeah. The recent safety issues have definitely caused us to rethink a lot of things about how we spend our money.
The half-cent sales tax is gonna enable us to help our schools a lot. There's a lot of needs out there. The most recent school that we've had built is River Sink and it's 13 years old. Well, when a school's that old, it's already gonna start having problems. Your own air conditioning in your house needs taking care of. And some of our schools are a whole lot older and their air conditioning and heating systems are failing. And I hate walking into River Springs Middle School, for example, and having a whole wing of classrooms where it is suffocatingly hot because they cannot do, keep patching that air conditioning and the teachers are trying to teach. That's not a good situation. We need to fix it. Now, if you were listening to Mr. Walker and he said something about the sales tax in Leon, well, what he means is, if you have a half-cent sales tax like Leon County does, all of us, when we go shopping in Leon County, we are getting charged that half-cent sales tax to help their schools. When they come down here to go to the beach or go to the coast or go out to Angelo's or wherever they're going, they can be paying part of that half-cent sales tax for our kids and our schools. Because we just don't realize that's how it works sometimes. But it does. A half-cent sales tax allows us to get money, not just from Waukulla County, but from anybody that comes through our county and buys anything. So that's gonna help us a lot. It's money we can earn without it coming out of our particular pockets only. And it helps all of the schools. Back in the old days when I was at Waukulla Middle, I wrote a lot of grants and got money and put in technology labs, computer animation, plastics, animation, just all kinds of things for the kids. But after a few years that went by, well, that stuff became obsolete, but we weren't given any more money and we weren't allowed to apply for more grants because at that time, the state said the grants are for DNF schools only. We need the money.
So I'll be the first one to say that I don't feel that right now is the time for that. Maybe in a few more years. I do not support the half-cent sales tax. And here's why. The SR2 funds that came down that were from COVID relief funds, it was a $6 million grant that was handed down to the school. Now, this is my interpretation. This is how I read it. This is how you all would read it too. There were $6 million. $3 million of the dollars was cut off the top to go into HVAC repair. Those $3 million that was cut off the top. When I called and emailed Randy Beach to ask him, he's the chief financial officer for the district, he handles all the money, I asked him about the elephant in the room that's always going to be the football field. Where did the money come from? How did we get that? Is this the type of money that we're spending? Well, there was $400,000 given to us from Triumph Grants that wasn't earmarked. They could have used $400,000 to fix the air conditions. There was another $230,000 or $60,000 that comes every single year. This money is not earmarked. This money goes into a place that could be spent on HVAC repairs. So when I was at the board meeting, Mr. Pierce, and I'm loosely quoting him here, he's the superintendent, he said that this half-cent sales tax, this is a loose quote, is geared toward the northeast Tallahassee people who come to Waukulla County to shop on their way to the beach. I don't know where you guys shop whenever you're going out of town, but when my family's going camping, I normally go to Tallahassee, to Sam's, to do some of my shopping and then go. I'm not thinking that these northeast Tallahassee people are gonna come through enough to support this half-cent sales tax nearly as much as every time I go to the dollar store because I forgot washing detergent and laundry detergent and every other kind of thing that I need. I'm gonna fill the half-cent sales tax in my pocket and I could barely afford the groceries and the gas right now. So no, I would not have supported this. It would have died out with me on the board as just one part of five.
I do support the half-cent sales tax. However, I don't agree with some of the allocations that's been set up. The, I think that would need to take another look at. But if you're putting it on the ballot, it's already on the ballot in November and it's already being advertised as what it's for, then in that case, I would say I have not in support of the half-cent sales tax.
I too do not support the half-cent sales tax because I think this is the wrong time, the wrong season. We're in a recession. Gas is almost $6 a gallon. And we have a lot of older people in the county that cannot afford it. I know the things that have been listed would be very nice and they're probably very necessary to have, but I think we can find avenues of other revenue to bring in, i.e. more grant writing, other types of monies that could be allocated. But I don't think this is the right time for that half-cent sales tax.
Ms. Daniels, your question to start. Do you support an elected or appointed superintendent? Obviously, it would be, if something like that were to happen, it would be something the school would do. It would go to a referendum for the voters. I'm just asking if you would, if you support elected or appointed.
Well, I like having an elected superintendent mainly because we get to pick who that is. And we get to examine the candidates and decide who's gonna be best for our county. When you have an appointed superintendent, it can be just about anybody. They may not be the best person for our school. They may not have the educational expertise. And it's up to someone else in that case to decide. I just think that as Americans, we like to vote for the people that we have in charge and have some control over who's running our school system. As parents and grandparents and educators, we need to have that kind of control and be able to vote for the person we think's gonna do the very best job and make sure that that person knows the job and knows what the responsibilities are, especially the budget. Because we can't just spend money from this pocket or that pocket. It has to be by law available for that particular purpose. If it's capital outlay dollars, you can't spend it on anything else. If it's classroom dollars, you can't spend it on capital outlay. It's really important to have a superintendent who understands that.
I agree with Ms. Daniels. I definitely support an elected superintendent. In fact, woke, had the opportunity in, I think, two years to choose a new superintendent. And that's gonna be a really exciting time. I know that in Mr. Pierce's position, there hasn't been very many people. I think one person ran against him. But I'm hopeful for the next election, especially in Waukulla County, to see who will come out, who will be the front-runners for the superintendent. And it's a really big job. It's a really big decision for our voters. I definitely would support an elected superintendent.
I think I will go with the crowd. We, I definitely support an elected superintendent. With, you know, when you have an elected superintendent or any elected official, you guarantee they're from your county. They're from your city, they're from your town, whatever you want to say. So, you know, if you, if you appoint a superintendent, you could run into, like, where you have a lot of city managers and stuff where they go through them year after year after year. Or they're, and they bring them from, you know, halfway across the country. You know, when you have an elected superintendent or any elected official, you can guarantee they're from here. Or not necessarily from here, but they live here. They are a resident here, they're a registered voter here. And that's why we need to keep an elected superintendent.
Well, I'm gonna echo the saying. I think that we should have an elected superintendent because that's the, that's the heartbeat of voting. So your voice can be heard. And if we go into appointing, we're not necessarily going to always operate above board. So I think that the election of a superintendent is what's gonna keep our civil rights, so to speak, in the forefront of voting.
I also support elected superintendents. And I've worked for both, worked for appointed superintendents and elected superintendents. The appointed superintendents were in much larger counties. And they go off and they find a PhD somewhere from northwest, you know, Seattle and they've got all these big ideas. you know, Seattle, and they've got all these big ideas. Well, that would not work in Waukulla County. I can promise you that. That would not, that would not fly. So I don't want to be on the school board that's going to appoint a superintendent. That is, that's dangerous waters there. So definitely, definitely elect.
We'll start with you on this one. There's been a lot of controversy related to school boards lately, transgender issues, mask wearing, critical race theory. What do you see as the school board's role in navigating controversial issues?
I believe that forums and opportunities like this where you get to know your elected officials is really important. Standing strong in your beliefs and what you feel is best, but still being true to who you are and what you believe. Remembering that you're a board of one out of five people. You're not going to make all the decisions, but you need to continue to make decisions that you feel are morally right for you. So that's, that's what I believe.
There are a lot of things coming out in the rest of the world that really won't fly here in Waukulla. We have a much more conservative group of people here in Waukulla. And I think that as a board member, it's my duty to be the person that represents our county and our way of life and the things that we believe in and what's best for our children. We need to be very careful not to let other, other states or other counties dictate what's going to be taught to our kids here. We need to make sure that our parents have a lot to say about that. And as the board, we deal with policy and procedures. And what we need to focus on is what's best for our children and our families in Waukulla.
So one of the reasons why I really want to be on the school board is to prevent some of the foolishness that has gone on in the rest of this world, in the rest of this country. These school boards have gotten off the rails in many instances. And they're more concerned about their reflection out to other people than they are about taking care of their students in front of them. And no matter how much somebody wants things to be a certain way, some things just are. And, you know, I, I don't, I never want to offend other people. I want to think about their feelings and do what's right. However, men can't have babies. And I, you know, I feel like an idiot just even having to say that. But today, you have to say it. And I hope that doesn't offend anybody, but that's just biological fact. That's science. And so I am very much of a inclusive person. Part of my job, after I was a principal, was to recruit minority teachers to Waukulla County, or at least recruit them to apply in Waukulla County. I never hired, I couldn't hire them at that point. But when I was a hiring agent, I had more African-American teachers working for me than any other principal in the county, maybe ever, because I saw minority teachers as being vital for our kids. And many, many students in Waukulla County, they have never met an adult minority person. They've never had conversations with them because they're, they don't go to churches with minority folks. And so I understand where everybody's coming from with it, but we've got to be Waukulla County.
I'm going to try to remember the original question. Waukulla County is a great county. And naturally, we are a, quote, "more conservative" county. But you are not the only set of people that live in the county. There has to be diversity. There has to be inclusion because there are all types of people. And if we're such a great county, we should not be afraid to allow others to be a part of this county. So how we handle mask issues, gender issues, we have to come from the heart. I think a lot of times, we think too political about these type issue. You have to remember that these are people and their children. And being on the board, you're representing those children. So we have to just be really, really cognitive of the fact that we are all not the same. We will not all have the same view, but we should be able to come up with a common solution. You may not like my version of what it is. I may not like yours, but there is common ground that we have to find. We can't all be conservative. We all can't be liberals. But there's somewhere in the middle that we all should be able to meet.
You know, the, one thing that I have, I have always lived my life with and that I instill in my children and that every day I get up and I pray. When I go to bed, I pray before I walk in, before I get out of my truck every morning and walk into my job. Because, I mean, honestly, I work in a prison, so it needs prayer. But I pray. My faith is number one in my life. You know, and I'm not a Seminole fan, sorry. But I will say, you know, one thing that I did admire Bobby Bell. And, you know, he would say, "Faith, family, and football." You know, that was one of his well-known quotes. I go by the Bible. And if the Bible does not support what's going on in this country, then the country's on the wrong path. So we have to go back to number one. And the Bible is where we should start. And we have to have faith that it's going to work. But I'll start with prayer, too.
Mr. Hand will start, and we'll go back to that one. This one's, a citizen expressed concern about the lack of interaction during citizens-to-be-heard during school board meetings. Do you, do you have any sort of position on, on that issue?
Yes, actually, I do. Back in August, I believe it was, maybe it might have been July, I actually was a citizen-to-be-heard at the school board meeting. I found that, I found that the school board, and especially the superintendent, was very cold. And I was very, you know, I was very quick shutdown on my issue that I was bringing forth. And I'll be honest, the issue I was bringing forth was not allowing kids to be walked to their class on the first day. COVID was down. They were still not allowing it. Or, you know, I explained that, you know, my middle son, who was in first grade this year, we didn't walk him to kindergarten because COVID was at its highest then. Okay, fine. And he's a kid that you can let him out of the car, and he'll run at me, talk to anybody he wants to. He don't care. My youngest son started kindergarten this last year, and he's scared to death. But we couldn't walk into his class the first day. And luckily, you know, he has two older brothers that took his by the hand and took him to the class. He had a teacher, my middle son had the same teacher that he had in kindergarten. So my point being is that when, when I was, before me, there was me and one other person there that was there to speak about it. And the chair, and I'm assuming, I can't remember her name.
Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor. She was very quick to tell us that the school board makes policies. This is a procedure. And basically, you know, we would be heard, but this is superintendent's call. And when I tried to discuss it with the superintendent in the meeting, I was shut down. And I don't think that's the way it should be. We are citizens. We have the right to be heard. And that's why the parents should be allowed to be involved. I think the parents have been pushed out of the schools. No, granted, some of that is because of COVID. I'm not going to lie. But that's my stance on it.
I believe that citizens should be heard by the school board, not just school, but any county governmental officials, offices. We should have the opportunity to have our voices heard. I'm not very familiar with how the backlog or the backstory of the citizen. But the times that I've visited the meetings, citizens come up, they ask whatever question they want, and then they're given an answer or we'll get back with you type thing. So I don't know if there's a way that we can revise that to have a more moderated meeting before the meeting or sometime afterward as a follow-up. But I think it would be good public relations if we tried to be more open to the public.
Well, having been to dozens of school board meetings and heard many citizens come up and talk, that just is not the time to argue the point. That we, there's a meeting that has to be conducted. It has to end at some point. Everybody's not going to get their way. And so the citizens-to-be-heard is a time for citizens to make their grievances known, their opinions known. And then that should, the school board members should take that into account when they are going forward. The school board members all have emails that they can be contacted at. They all have telephones. There are other offices, office hours. There's all the times to argue the point. But in that school board meeting, it just is not that time.
It seems like there's a misunderstanding about how the citizens-to-be-heard is handled. Usually, when things are on the agenda, the school board has 10 days prior to prepare for the meeting, to investigate, to look up and get the facts. The citizens-to-be-heard is a three-minute time period for people to come in and give their opinion about something. If you want to come in and talk about an issue and get a response from us, by law, we're allowed 10 days. So that just means you need to come in and get on the agenda for the next meeting. And that, that way, it's introduced to us 10, 10 days before. We have time to go back and do our homework, research, find out about the issue. And that's how, come at the meetings, you can have more discussion and more time. When you bring up something at the school board meeting in your three minutes, that gives us something that we can go back then and talk about or research or figure out what to do about it. Usually, someone from the county office will then go back and talk to that person personally on the phone or email or whatever. So I think maybe we need to do a better job about explaining how do you get to spend more time at the school board meeting issuing your concerns? There is procedure for that set by law, and we can work on that.
I'm so glad she went first because that explains a lot to me. And it also opens up something that we can do for our citizens. I think that she's exactly right. I think that there is a misunderstanding. I decided last April, not this April past, but 15 months ago, that I wanted to run for school board. So I tried to attend every school board meeting. And what you'll find is, myself often, and someone from the newspaper there, after they do the employee of the month or teacher of the month recognition, there's literally like five or less people who are sitting in the audience. So you do stick out. But there have been several opportunities for people to come and to talk. And it isn't a very intimidating platform to get up. You stand up at a podium. You have a microphone. You're speaking to a panel. There's probably eight representatives from the school board and just the district office people, the superintendent and secretaries, things like that. It's a very intimidating, it's like going into the principal's office and you're in trouble because most of the time, you're upset about something anyway. So you're trying to, you're trying to get your point across. It does seem a little cold on their side, but like Ms. Daniels said, I think it's a misunderstanding. It's, it's an opportunity for them to take in the knowledge of what you're trying to get across. But then, my question would be, it always seems like a what-now situation. I didn't know Mr. Hand at the time, but I was at that meeting whenever that happened. And I almost decided not to run for school board in that moment when Melissa Taylor said, "policy procedure," because I am frustrated with a lot of the procedures in school board. It's a fine line between what the school board does and what the superintendent has control over. But in the citizens-to-be-heared, I think one thing that we do like is open, clear, clear communication to the citizens of Waukulla. Hey, if you have a problem, come tell us, email us. We're going to have 10 days. But come back to the next meeting. The next meeting's going to be a month out. But hey, you know, follow up.
This will be a bit of a softball question after some of the other questions. Who was your favorite teacher and why?
Oh, that's easy. My favorite teacher was Ms. Ruth Williams. She taught me from first grade to third grade. I loved school. She was just so nurturing. I never missed it. I always had perfect attendance because I was in her class. And she made school so much, made it so fun. And that was my favorite teacher. I've had other good teachers, but she always stands out as the person who helped propel me into wanting to learn more.
So yeah, like, I've had many teachers I would consider to be my favorites. And it was, it spanned over that whole time, you know, 12, 12 years. And, but if I had to pick one, if I get backed up in the corner and I have to pick one, it'd be Bob Meyer. He was more than just a teacher for me. And he hired me in Waukulla County as an assistant principal. He was my teacher, my football coach, my friend, my golf partner. And that was all before he hired me. That was, you know, right out of high school. He was such a great guy. And he just recently passed. And, but if I had to pick one, that's, that's him.
I think my favorite teacher was Dr. Dorothy Hoffman. She was one of my Spanish teachers in college. And she was a little old lady. She always smiled. She had a smile from ear to ear. And she was so sweet. Even if you said something wrong, she would just sort of laugh and correct you. But you never felt bad about it. You always felt inspired to try harder. I also love the fact that she sat two rows in front of me at all the FSU home games. And I could see her down there cheering and jumping them down. She's just a little thing, always by herself. She went to all the basketball games as well. And she was just such a positive person that kids flourished in her classroom. And I always wanted to be like that, to like every kid in the room and to enjoy things about their culture and their background and just to get them to love learning, too.
I hope he sees this because he's going to be frustrated when I say this, but David Keraway is the reason that I became an educator and my all-time favorite teacher. If I ever have to pick someone, I actually wanted him to marry my husband and me. But we had our pastor do it. So Mr. Keraway tried his hardest to teach me math. And did I tell you guys I came to the library, I'd come like twice a week because I love reading? And most people who love reading don't love numbers, especially whenever the numbers have letters. That just threw me for a loop. So when that started happening, bless his heart, he tried his best. But he never gave up on me. And in his class, he gave rankings. And this is true, this is true story. So you may want to rethink me on this. So he did rankings. And I think there were 22 students in the class. It was geometry. I took it twice, just to let you know. The only thing I ever failed in my life was geometry, straight Fs. And 22 kids in the class, and I was number 21. Number 22 didn't come. That is a true story. He did not come to class. So I got to take that twice with Mr. Keraway. He passed it in summer school, but he never gave up on me. And he knew that every time I failed a test, he would turn my quiz or my test grade face down, and I would cry. And I would cry because I was so disappointed in myself. And I was so disappointed that I just could not get it. He offered after-school tutoring, but what 11th-grade girl wants to go to after-school tutoring when you can drive? Not me. I was too busy doing other things besides doing what I needed to do. But he didn't, he didn't give up. And he inspired me to do this. We attend South Tropi Southern Baptist Church together when he's not preaching. And we went Christmas caroling one year. And I said, "You know, Mr. Keraway, you're the reason I became a teacher." And he turned around and he looked me square in the eyes and he said, "Don't you ever blame me for that." Great, he's just a super guy. If you know him, he's, he's also a pastor. So he's the reason that I'm doing what I'm doing today.
Well, this is a sort of hard question for me since I'm not originally from Waukulla County. But the, I have one teacher, and I'll briefly talk about her. Her name was Fay Parker. She was my world history teacher in high school. She was economics. She was my student council sponsor, my class sponsor. She was my student council sponsor for the four years I was on student council, including the year I was president. And she, you know, to this day, we still talk. And I still, she said, "The one thing you'll remember" in her world history class. She started skipping around the classroom. And she'd say, "You'll remember me skipping around the classroom and what that will remind you of, of Russia and the Warm Water Report." Okay. I don't know what it has to do with each other, but I remember her doing that. And I still bring that up every time I see her. But in relation to that, I do have a favorite teacher in Waukulla County. And I say that because my middle child has ADHD and's modern autism. And we were very concerned about him streamlining in regular school. And his kindergarten teacher was amazing. And her name is Kelly Willis. And she has, I think she's been a kindergarten teacher there at Crawfordville for 17 years or some odd number like that. But she was absolutely amazing. She took him by the hand and... She took him by the hand, and he still, this year, he had Ms. Henderson in first grade, and he, his brothers will say something to him, and he'll say, "Did you have 103 average on your report card?" Okay. So, but he is extremely smart, but Ms. Willis does an amazing job, and if I had to pick a favorite teacher, even though I'm not from Waukulla County, it would be Kelly Willis.
Last thing, closing, and we'll start with Mr. Walker.
Well, I just want to say I would be honored to represent District One on the school board. I will work very hard at the job. I have put my entire life into the students of Waukulla County, and I've still got some more to go. I know that. And I still have some more to give. I want to see Waukulla County grow, and for the school system to grow along with the county in a responsible way. And that's why I am, that's why I'm doing this. When I said that my favorite teacher was Bob Meyer, he is, he is the reason why I became an educator, because he was very personable. He treated everyone individually. And I want to be a school board member that can be responsive to the citizens of the county, to the citizens in District One, but also to the teachers and to the students. That's it.
I haven't missed a school board meeting in all the years that I've been on the board now. I'm very seldom sick. I'm at the schools a lot, 300, 400, 500 hours during the school year. I was allowed to go because I'm an employee, and I didn't have to worry about COVID restrictions. But I'm at the schools all the time. I've been at Riverside, for example, two days a week, every day for the last four and a half years. And I work with the kids. I read aloud, I tell them jokes, I work on cursive, I do spelling tests, I help them learn how to spell words. I grade papers all the time, take them home with me, got homework to do. I plan lessons for the kids. I took smart math kids out and taught them Spanish and Florida history, because they were bored, already knew it, but I wanted the opportunity to work with them a little bit more. I do, I'm a member of the Waukulla Coastal Optimists Club, and I'm in charge of all the educational things, so I do all the grade roll competitions, essay, or rhetorical speeches. I judge for 4H or anything like that. I'm also a member of the Waukulla County Coastal Opti, I'm sorry, Academic Boosters. And as a booster, I help raise money for high school senior scholarships, and I got to give out 50 scholarships again this year for the Waukulla County Coastal Optimists. And it's a lot of work, but I love doing it, because our kids all need the chance to be the person they want to be. Everybody needs help with college. And even, I try to follow up with some of them, say, "Now, how are you doing? Do you have money for next year? What's happening with you?" And the kids will tell you, "Oh, yeah, they know me everywhere I go. I've taught so many kids and been around them," because even after I quit teaching, I mentored at, Metar Elementary for a couple of years in the fifth grade, and I've done different schools and different projects. But I love working with the kids, and to me, it's real important. I'm sympathetic. I'm a grandmother type. The kids like me, and I love working with the kids in Waukulla. Thank you.
I think that it's important, especially as we move forward, to have a fresh perspective with someone who's been in the classroom. Being in the classroom, I see what the needs are. I see that my colleagues are leaving Waukulla, and it's heartbreaking, because I know the quality teachers that they are. It's very rewarding for the schools who are snagging them up in our surrounding districts, but it's a loss. 21-year teacher today posted on Facebook, "I hate to leave Metar after 21 years, but Fort Braden, here I come. Better benefits, better salary." We can't afford to do that anymore. I think that our board needs to have a fresh perspective of what's actually happening in the classroom. What are the needs of the students? What are these learning gaps? The boards seems to be separated right now from the actual needs and what's happening with our kids in the classroom, what our teachers need in order to help our students succeed. And there's a disconnect from the parents. So, are our parents' voices being heard? Do they feel that they can come to board members with their concerns? I feel that I have that advantage, because I am currently serving in the classroom, and I am part of this community. My kids go to school here. I want what's best for every student, not just my own. And I'm willing, I'm really hopeful that I'll have that opportunity in the future.
First of all, I want to thank Bill and the Sun for hosting this. I think this was a great event. And I want to, you know, in the District One race, you know, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Walker and Ms. Taylor, but I'm the only one with kids in school right now. And, you know, right now, my kids are set to graduate in 2031, '33, '34, '39. Got a little ways to go. So, I'm in this for the long haul. I'm looking to the future. I'm looking to the future of Waukulla County. I'm looking to the future for my kids, and for all the kids of Waukulla County. And some of you have heard me say this before, and I'm going to say it again, and I'll keep saying it, whether I'm elected to school board or not. My first, my oldest, my three boys are adopted. We adopted all three, two through foster care, one private adoptive. We are trying to adopt a baby girl right now. We've had her since she was two days old. She's now over two. We fought for those kids. We are fighting for our baby. We have a termination of parental rights trial next week. Hopefully, it's going to work out. We have fought for them every day of their lives. And as much as I fight for my own kids, I will fight for every kid of Waukulla County.
I may not be a classroom educator, but I've worked with students for the last 23 years, and they weren't elementary or high school. It was those that was at college, they were lost. We have students that were, parents would come and just drop them off. No housing, no financial aid. So, those are the type situations that you have to learn how to adapt to. For 23 years, I've done that. And before that, I was an administrator at a rehab hospital. I've always been an administrative-type person. So, the skills that I have would be perfect for the school board, because you are going to be doing a lot of administrative stuff, but you also need to learn how to communicate with the students, with the parents, and also with the community. So, one of my main focuses, again, will be, I think Waukulla County School is an excellent school system, but I think we have a PR problem. We're not letting people know what we have available to them. And if you do not know what's available, you won't ask the right questions. I think we need to have our members to be very open, and like Ms. Daniels said, to be very nurturing to students. And we live in a society where everybody wants to be so big and so cold, but Waukulla County is not a big, cold county. We're very nurturing, we're very friendly, and I think we need to make sure we keep that atmosphere, and that we make sure that we stay open in our hearts to other people. That's the one thing that's... I know Waukulla is great, but I don't want it to be great just for one subset of people. I want it to be great for everyone, every child, every student. I think about that mother who has three kids.
I want to thank Rachel Pianta. She's been our tally keeper tonight. Thank the audience. I didn't expect such a big crowd. Thank you all for coming out, and especially thank you to the candidates. Y'all put yourself out there for public service, and we appreciate what you're doing. And thank you for being here tonight, and thank you all.